Hello, and thank you for watching the 2018 Fall Legislative Forums hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. I'm Cindy Bernard, past president of the Ashland Chamber, of Rogue Valley Roasting Company, and the chair of the Chamber Legislative Committee for 2018. Moderating the discussion with me tonight is Marie Lang. Welcome, Marie, owner of Ashland Homes Real Estate and past president of the Ashland Chamber. Tonight, we will be introducing Randy Dolinger, who is running against incumbent Stephen Jensen for City Council Position 6. Due to scheduling conflicts, George Kramer, who is also running for this seat, was unable to attend. Each election year, the Ashland Chamber hosts legislative forums as a service to the Ashland community. The Ashland Chamber is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that does not have a PAC, it is not affiliated with or a member of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, or its political action committee. This year, we are hosting forums for Ashland City Council Positions 2, 3, and 4, Parks Commission Positions 3, 4, and 5, State Senate District 3, State Representative District 5, Jackson County Sheriff, and Jackson County Commissioners Positions 1 and 3. All candidates were sent the questions prior to the forum. The forum tonight is being recorded, edited, and will air on local community television, the RV TV website, and the Ashland Chamber website, along with additional -- excuse me, election information at ashlandchamber.com. The Ashland Chamber has many decades of long relationships within the business sector and through effective community partnerships with businesses, SOU, the hospital, and OSF, and with the city of Ashland, among many others. We promote business and the community by providing business resources, creating events such as the Festival of Light in the Fourth of July, promote tourism, the economy, improve the quality of life, and serve as the welcome center for our city. Over 700 businesses are members of the Chamber representing thousands of employees and jobs, and hundreds of community volunteers who are engaged citizens, helping make our community better every day. We believe in collaboration and effective relationships, which we hold dear. After each candidate is introduced, they will have a two-minute opening statement to discuss why they are running for their position and what skills and accomplishments qualify them to serve as an Oregon elected official. Following the opening remarks, candidates will be asked three questions with three minutes each to respond. A bell will ring when the candidate has 30 seconds, and then 10 seconds remaining. If there is time, they can give a two-minute closing statement. They must adhere to this time restraint. Additionally, each candidate had to sign a consent form in order to participate. The Ashland Chamber is a private, nonprofit, mutual benefit association. We require the candidates to refrain from any form of speech that includes profanity, obscenity, hate, racism, or vulgarity, or that is insulting or offensive to any ethnic, religious, political, or other identifiable group or individual, as determined by the forum moderator. A violation of this rule will cause the candidate to be removed from the forum. If necessary, a correction to the record will be made by our moderator or host if there are inaccurate or inflammatory comments made. We expect and will insist on respectful behavior. This is a forum, not a debate between candidates. If time allows, we will have follow-up questions for the candidates, in which case the candidates will have two minutes to respond, again using the bell system. Please note that the candidates' introductions were submitted by the candidate. And they have drawn numbers to see who will start. And tonight, I will start by introducing Stephen Jensen. Welcome.
Thank you.
Stephen currently serves as an Ashland City Councilor and has been an Ashland resident since 1972. His occupational background includes a teacher at South Medford High, general manager of building supply companies, truck driver at Trans Alaska Pipeline, and a U.S. Army medic in Vietnam. His educational background: a bachelor's in soil science from Cal Poly, a master's in integrated science from SOU. Stephen's prior governmental experience: currently serving on the Trails Master Plan Committee, and for seven years on the Ashland Forest Lands Commission. Community service: Ashland Food Project District Coordinator, Fish Lake Homeowners Association President, Oregon United for Marriage 2014 Campaign Fundraiser, and Civic. Voted to welcome ride-sharing into Ashland, supported wildfire mitigation ordinance, encouraged expansion of senior services, co-authored the 2018 Ashland Trails Master Plan, edited nationally-recognized 2016 Ashland Forest Plan. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you.
Stephen, I'm going to have you -- excuse me, start -- here goes my voice -- with why you're running. Briefly discuss your skills and accomplishments that qualify you to serve as an Ashland City Councilor.
Thank you for having me here today, first of all. This is a wonderful opportunity. I've lived here since 1972, and I have looked from afar at city government, and I've been interested in it all along. I have been both critical and supportive, and as I got older, I thought, why not jump in? If I don't, others do, and I have no room to criticize if I'm not willing to step forward. My past, my wife would refer to my past as kind of a checkered past, she would say, but I think it's the checkered past that makes me qualified to contribute positively to the governance of our town. I've had 15 years as general manager of business, contractor of lumberyards, 12 years as a high school science and American history teacher. I grew up in a family of eight, the second oldest, and so I did a fair amount of care and direction, and city governance takes care and direction with the kind hand of an older brother. And so, I feel confident that I can bring these skills to improving the tone and the overall governance of our lovely town.
Thank you. All right. Randy, Randy Dolinger. Randy has lived in Ashland almost 30 years. He's seen a lot of changes as issues and problems have come our way. These issues and problems generally work themselves out, and although not everyone is ever happy with the outcomes, Ashland keeps going strong. The one issue that nobody seems to be able to deal with is the deteriorating environment downtown, the homeless travelers, the panhandlers who've taken over the sidewalks and public spaces, making it impossible to simply enjoy a walk down the street. Randy has a realistic plan to take care of this problem, and that is why he's running for City Council. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Randy, for your two minutes, why don't you tell us why you're running? Briefly discuss your skills and accomplishments that qualify you to serve as an Ashland City Councilor.
Okay, well, I'm running for City Council because I love Ashland, and I would like to see Ashland begin to fulfill its potential, its unlimited potential. And I've been here 30 years, as you mentioned. My skills and accomplishments kind of blend together. I guess my skills, which is an ongoing process, is I actually really and truly enjoy listening to people, whatever their persuasion, listening to their opinions and their beliefs with an open mind. I've been doing this all my life, specifically for the last 30 years in Ashland. I've talked to a great many people about a great number of issues, and come away more educated and wiser for the effort. And my accomplishments, being here is a tremendous accomplishment, and what has led me to be here? Getting to know Ashland, feeling like I do know Ashland. I know the firefighters, I know the policemen, I've known mayors and counselors and baristas and cafe owners and grocery people. I spent the last 30 years, more or less, just trying to get to know people and to be a part of Ashland, and I love this town. And I'm just really happy to have an opportunity to at least try to get elected to City Council where I feel I can actually make a difference and make this town better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen, what are Ashland's strengths and how can we build upon them to foster economic vitality?
I thought that was a great question. I had to ponder that one for a while. So first of all, it's fairly easy to list the strengths, and it's kind of a fun thing to do. And I made a list, and as I started making it, it kind of went on and on, and I just thought about things that you normally wouldn't think as Ashland's strengths. So educated population, Interstate 5, natural beauty, deep history, the ski area, Bymart and shopping cart. When I first moved here in 1972, I think Bymart had just opened up, and my uncle and the family, Dick Jensen family, was so excited about Bymart. And Bymart has become this backbone of this town, the people that supervalue. Sometimes we don't think about that. Ashland Food Co-op, Lithia Park, the youth levy activities, SOU, Oregon Shakespeare's Festival. All those things are strengths of Ashland. So then we talk about economic vitality. So I think it's important to define terms. What does that mean, economic vitality? I would think that it means a year-round job, which can be a struggle in this town. It would be family wage, the often-talked-about and lamented affordable housing, which is a real issue, decent retail is economic vitality. All those things are important for a town. We could improve, as most towns could. We could certainly improve on some of those, but we are gifted to have an economic vitality in this town. And combined with the strengths, it makes us a wonderful, wonderful town. The challenge is to identify upfront and realistically how we can improve the economic vitality and still keep the character of the town. And it's a constant challenge. This is new territory. It's been going on like this since the late 1800s, and we've done a fairly good job all along, and that's why we have the town we have. So the economic vitality is important, and we can't forget it. It has so many facets, and I would applaud the Chamber for the work that you do in helping us understand the economic vitality and respond to it.
Thank you. Randy, what are Ashland's strengths and how can we build upon them to foster economic vitality?
Okay, I do believe Ashland's strengths are the people of Ashland, and it has always been the people of Ashland. This town was founded some 175 years ago or so by strong people who came here for a reason, and that reason, unlike a lot of pioneer settlements, wasn't for the gold, it was for the beauty of this town and for the abundance, for the natural abundance of this town. And these were hard-working, strong people who came here and built, integrated, a strength into the community of Ashland, which I do believe continues to this day. People who come to Ashland, as the early pioneers, don't come for the gold. They come for the community, they come for the spirit, they come for the vibration of Ashland, for the beauty and for the abundance. These are the real strengths of Ashland, are the people who are here, the open-minded, strong people with the wherewithal to do what we need to do when it needs to be done, and a feeling of community cohesion. This is the strength of Ashland. This is the fundamental strength of Ashland, is its people. Okay, and the second part of that question, how can we build on these strengths to foster economic vitality? Of course, I had these questions, both of us, all three of us, in advance and thought about this. Well, how can we build on these strengths? Okay, what comes to me is economic vitality is directly related to the happiness of the people. When the people are happy, they're happier to work harder, to produce more. When the people are happy, the economic engine turns. Waitresses get better tips. Restaurants are more likely to open. The community spirit is such a huge part of our economic vitality. To get back to my issue, and some people have said, you have one issue. I don't have one issue. I'm well aware that there are a great many issues. The City Council plays a big part in coming to terms with these issues. The one issue that really concerned me, that drove me to run for City Council, is the transient population downtown, which has taken over our downtown. Anybody who walks downtown is hit with a moment of sadness and depression. It doesn't have to be this way. I want to be on council so I can change this, so I can bring back a feeling of spirit and happiness, which will drive the economic engine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen, please just define how you see the role of a City Councilor and what you think will be your biggest challenge.
I see the role of a City Councilor as taking on the mantle of a tribal elder. When we become City Councilors, I think that we become, hopefully, the wise men and women of the village. We become the wise parent, who in many cases have to say, you can have this, but you can't have it all, and there has to be constraints, and that's where budget constraints come in. You're the voice of calm, you're an arbitrator, you're the link between the citizenry and what some would consider a bureaucracy, a necessary bureaucracy. You're the steady hand. You're the guardian of the institutional memory. You're the guardians of tradition. It's a big role, it's an important role, but it's one that I'm more and more relishing and enjoying. Biggest challenge, short-term, biggest challenge for me is learn, the learning curve, the processes and procedures, and the understanding of how the City Council works, what we can do and can't do, and so on. A bigger challenge, in the longer term, is to exert a calming influence in our current city discourse. It's a common blood sport in this town, about every six or seven years, there seems to be this rise of an inordinate amount of criticism and backbiting and snarkiness when it comes to city administration and City Council. And we have, I think, one of those little sessions right now, and I would really like to operate and assume the mantle of a calming influence and a gathering together and a collaboration of the forces that would kind of be negative. And I want to be positive. I want to exert a positive influence and bring folks to the table and find the common ground, and that's the biggest challenge that I see, besides the nuts and bolts of paving and sewers and water and homeless and on and on.
Thank you. Randy, please define how you see the role of a City Councilor and what you think will be your biggest challenge.
Okay, well, I believe the role of a City Councilor is to be the voice of the people of Ashlanders, to address their concerns, to hear their concerns, and to do whatever is possible as a City Councilor to mitigate, to take care of these concerns. For instance, the wildfire. Now, City Councilors can't do a whole lot about the smoke that has been pouring into Ashland lately, but there might be some indications that we can follow. Affordable rent. City Councilors can't do a lot about that, but we can lean into it and at least pay attention to it and listen to the varying signs. So my role as a City Councilor will mostly be to be a representative of the people, to listen to the people, to listen to both sides of every story, all sides, and to make common sense and thoughtful decisions when they need to be made. And what was the second part of the question again?
What you think will be your biggest challenge?
You know, I think any challenge is simultaneously an opportunity, a great opportunity, and I don't see any reason why we can't meet whatever challenges come our way, as we have been meeting for 175 years, that shouldn't change. There will always be challenges, there will always be some people who aren't going to be real happy with the results, but as a City Councilor, as an elected voice of the people of Ashland, I feel I can meet these challenges and overcome them, and in fact, turn them into opportunities.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask you the next question, put you in that position. Tell us the top three issues or challenges you feel Ashland is facing.
Okay, the top three issues or challenges? Well, of course, the degradation of our downtown civility is a huge issue, and I believe it is probably the fundamental issue that we need to work with, that for years now, and it only grows worse every year, transients, not to be confused with the homeless, who have always been in Ashland, but transients who travel from town to town and have no affection, no affinity, no loyalty to their surroundings, they grab a piece of cardboard and they sit downtown, and they rake in the easy money. I think this is the biggest challenge and the biggest issue that Ashland faces economically, spiritually, emotionally, psychologically, in every way. Ashland is negatively affected by maybe two dozen people. Two dozen people. Hundreds of people go downtown every day, and they take a negative hit from two dozen people. They say, can you spare that slice of pizza? Can you spare a dollar? Anything helps, please help. Everywhere you turn, there's another cardboard sign and another desperate, helpless person. I'm not saying these are bad people, but obviously, these people are very misguided, and I would like to offer them a little guidance. For instance, I think there's no reason why we can't offer them work. And a lot of people say, well, they're mentally ill. No, they're not mentally ill. They can work, they're strong, they carry backpacks, they move around, they work hard every day. Why don't they work? They don't want to work. I honestly believe, and I know these people, most of them do want to work. They can't wait two weeks for a paycheck, they don't have a resume, they don't have IDs, a lot of them aren't even using their real name, they can't. Maybe they're wanted for some petty crime in another state. They're here, they don't know any better, so they go downtown. Ninety percent of the homeless in Ashland know better intuitively than to foul their nest. If they need to pan in, or they pan in, a shopping cart, Safeway, Market of Choice, the well springs on the us anywhere, but not downtown. Intuitively, they have a sense of fair play, and it's really not fair, as well as fouling your nest. It's not fair. So we have two dozen people who come and go, go from one town to another, who, as the homeless say, blow the scene up for everyone else. This can be changed, this needs to be stopped. There's no reason this can't be stopped, and I believe if we offer these people work, $10 an hour, community service with cash payout, at the end of the day, they will invariably be happy to take it. They trust the government. I don't necessarily trust some guy who shows up and says, hey, you want to work for me? They work all day, gives them a couple of bagels. That really discourages them wanting to do that in the future. If they know they're working for the government, and they're going to walk away that day with $50, they're going to take that job.
Thank you. Stephen, tell us the top three issues or challenges you feel Ashland is facing.
Sometimes it's hard to pick the top three, but I did. Excuse me. I think the budget. There is a -- some budget challenges coming down the pike. The budget process starts in March and ends in May, the formal budget process. And that's kind of the, wouldn't call it bad news, that's the tough news. The good news is, and I really want to emphasize this because we have a fair amount of budget chippiness in this town right now, the good news is we have a very able new budget officer, Mark Welch, in town here. We have new processes, the new open.gov software that's available to every citizen in this town is absolutely wonderful. It is robust, it is transparent, it's in real time. It's a little bit of a challenge to get into, it's a little bit of a challenge to navigate through it, but it is, I was sitting in Mark Welch's office today, and he was showing me a few items, and he was zinging through that, he was obviously familiar with it, but there are more pie charts and tables, and so much information there that the transparency, the lack of transparency is a moot point from here on out. There is no lack of transparency. So budget, it's going to be a challenge, it's going to be a big challenge, but with the good people in place, which we have now, it's going to be overcome, and we're going to tackle it. The next, second item is planning and community development revitalization. We've got the Moribund-Cromwell Mill project out there, and I do use the word moribund, it needs to be some life pumped into it, and the transit triangle is being on consideration right now, and it needs some wrinkles ironed out of it, and the normal neighborhood, and Clear Creek, we have lots of things on the drawing boards that needs to be pumped up. Third item is, and I would agree with Mr. Dolinger on this, is the homelessness downtown. We need realistic compassion combined with the expectation of safety in public spaces. We have to follow the law, we have to follow the Constitution, we have to follow the Bill of Rights, and there's some challenges there, but we've got a wonderful police department who has really made some changes this year, and we want to continue on with that, but that continues to be a challenge.
Thank you. Stephen, how do you intend to work collaboratively with community partners such as the Chamber?
So Maria, do you mean you plural, like the City Council, or just me individually?
You, if you are a City Councilor, and continue to be a City Councilor, and, you know, not just the Chamber, but community partnerships. How do you intend to work with them collaboratively?
I'd view the role of a City Councilor and the City Council in general, as the glue that binds together. We are in a wonderful position of collaboration and partnership. There's money, there's a community presence, there's communication apparatus. I think that there are existing wonderful collaborations, and there's ones that could be improved upon, and there's new ones that can be brought into play. For instance, the existing faith community and social services, I think, can continue to be, to do the good work they do, and the city can certainly foster that and to be, to do the good work they do, and the city can certainly foster that and encourage that. The Parks, Ashland School District, and City of Ashland collaboration on the Briscoe property, for instance, came together very nicely in a collaborative kind of way. Everybody benefited from that. Jackson County and the City of Ashland in the wildlands approach. We have lots of county land around here that is not quite being taken care of in terms of weed abatement and vegetation control. And there could definitely be some improved collaboration, and we look forward to Kelly Matting helping us out with that. The Chamber of Commerce and the City of Ashland in their smoke awareness and smoke mitigation process is very encouraging. The city celebrations are wonderful, the Fourth of July, the lights. I drove the family 1921 Model T in today's, this year's Fourth of July parade, and it's a wonderful, wonderful experience, and people love it. Collaboration with parking, city can collaborate with the businesses downtown, parking. I'm going to propose that the parking structure in town for the month of October offer free parking, just to try to help out merchants for some of the business they lost during the summer. It's a small thing, but it's just an example of the kind of collaboration that we can do. The final thing that government, that we can do as City Council in some cases is get out of the way. Sometimes the government needs to get out of the way. For instance, I have a little bit of a problem with the outlawing of sandwich boards and furry animals on sidewalks downtown upon occasion, when we have sidewalk sales or some other kinds of things. I think government could get out of the way on that. Another one would be food trucks. I would strongly advocate, unless somebody can convince me otherwise, the use of food trucks in downtown. And anyway, those are some examples, and I think there's a great opportunity for collaboration in this town. It already exists. It's wonderful, and we can continue down that path.
Thank you. Randy, how do you intend to work collaboratively with community partners such as the Chamber?
Didn't you skip a question?
Did I? I don't think so.
I thought that was the last question.
That is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, oh, didn't you do what the three challenges of the city? You did that one. Yeah, we're on number. See how fast this is going?
Okay, so read it to me again.
You're so comfortable with it all. How do you intend to work collaboratively with community partners such as the Chamber?
Well, I think it's important that the Council works collaboratively with all community partners and with the entire community. And I look forward to working with the police department, for instance. I really admire our cops. I spend a lot of time talking to the downtown cops, well as former police chiefs, detectives, et cetera. I think we need to work collaboratively, as we've been doing all along, and we need to just keep doing it with the schools, with the senior center, with the parks, with all of Ashland. The Chamber represents the people of Ashland, and I do believe it's within our ability to, the Council rather, represents the people of Ashland. It's within our ability to work with those people, to listen to them, to see what they really want, and to try and implement realistic and reasonable methods of going about this. And there's no reason that can't be done. It might appear it hasn't been done very effectively in some cases. In many cases, we're doing great. I really love Ashland. I love the city staff. I love what everybody's been doing. They've been doing great and a professional job. One issue that nobody seems to be able to get a grip on is the deterioration, the degradation of the heart of Ashland, the spirit of Ashland, which is downtown Ashland like it's downtown any town in America. We need to reclaim it, and we can do that. Offering this dozen or two dozen people work is a huge step in the right direction. Of course, even if they take the work, there'll be a whole new tribe of people come in and take their place. So I will insist, we need to ban panhandling. We need to ban sign flying, laying on the sidewalk, sitting on the sidewalks, drawing on the sidewalks in downtown Ashland. The same area that has been described already, no smoking overnight. Hundreds of people smoke downtown overnight. Nobody can smoke downtown. It's not a problem. You just walk out of the boundaries and you enjoy a cigarette. We can do the same thing with this reckless, unsustainable, dysfunctional behavior which has taken over our town. Now, we are talking about two dozen people. We're not talking about the homeless. There have traditionally been 100 to 200, maybe 300 homeless people in Ashland. The last thing 90%, maybe 95% of these people want is to be recognized as homeless. They just want to blend in. They just want to do what they need to do, and they don't defoul their nest. It's one or two dozen people, and this can be changed. We need these laws. No panhandling, no sign flying, no sitting or laying on the sidewalk in downtown Ashland, and we can do it.
Thank you. So we are coming to closing now. I don't have any follow-up questions to you, so we are going to give you each two minutes to do your closing remarks and convince the voters of Ashland why they should vote for you. So we'll start with you, Randy, and then Stephen.
Two minutes to close, okay. Well, I've been talking to a lot of people about this and all the issues, of course. There are a great many issues, from the closing of the ditch trail to just one issue after another. I'm all in my head. I wrote them down, but I decided to do this ad lib extemporaneously. So here I am. The main issue we need to address is the deterioration of downtown Ashland, and we can do this. And now, as I've been talking to a lot of people, I've heard, "Well, the Supreme Court has ruled it's freedom of speech." No, the Supreme Court never ruled. I researched this. I'm not a lawyer, but I've looked deeply into this. The Supreme Court never ruled on panhandling. They ruled once, 20, 30 years ago, that Krishnas took them to court and said, "All right, this is public property. We can panhandle in Laguardia Airport." And they struck it down. They said, "No, you can't, even though it's public property. There's such a thing within the Bill of Rights, the first right, free speech concerning a captive audience." So they said, "No, you can't panhandle because it's a captive audience." Then there have been a lot of lower courts who have ruled, "No, you can't ban panhandling here. You can't ban panhandling over there." And everybody thinks, "Well, the ACLU moves in, it's going to be too expensive to try to do anything, so we're just going to let it continue to get completely out of hand." But this is complete misinformation. The lower courts, the appellate courts, have ruled that bans on panhandling in tourist and business parts of town have been upheld. Bans on panhandling in groups, which is a major issue in Ashland, have been upheld. We can, within the boundaries of the Constitution, within the precedence of established law, we can ban this behavior in downtown Ashland and return Ashland to the beautiful place that I remember when I got here 30 years ago. We can put that fountain back in downtown Ashland, for instance.
Thank you.
And the benches.
Okay. Stephen, your closing remarks, please.
One councillor is not going to make a huge difference. I would never run on the idea that I'm going to go in and flip things upside down and change the world and change Ashland. One councillor can be a collaborative partner in a good existing partnership, which we do have on the City Council right now. I'm very pleased with our City Council, and I'm delighted to have been selected to join that group, and I certainly would like it to continue that way. I have deep roots in this town. I love this town. My wife's mom, Mary Chrisleeb, was dean of students at Southern Oregon University. Her father, Norm Chrisleeb, was the service manager for the local Ford dealership for years and years. Her brother's a doctor here. I have been the beneficiary of the wisdom and the goodness of that family, and I feel it in this town, and I would like to share that and grow that. I would call upon the citizens to, if they're unhappy in this town with certain aspects of city government, to contribute. I would challenge citizens to maybe get off Facebook and get off Twitter and join a commission, go to a public forum, visit with our department heads. Mark Welch is very available, and become part of this town. I would like to continue to be a part of the City Council, and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Yeah, again, I would really like to thank both of you gentlemen for being here tonight.
Our pleasure.
Stephen, Randy. It's wonderful for you to take the time to come and show our citizens some insight and perspective on how you would move forward if you're elected to this position. And thanks, Marie, for being my sidekick here tonight as the capable moderator. And most of all, I'd like to thank you, the citizens, for, again, taking the time to listen, to learn, and be able to make an educated choice when it's time to vote. So thank you for watching. And remember that these will be played on ashlandchamber.com along with additional election information. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that it? I didn't get to say it.